Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Whitmore, the chairman of the Town Council Education Committee. And I'd like to welcome you to the Town Council Education Committee and Board of Finance Joint Meeting. Tonight, we are continuing our discussion from last week on the audit of the Board of Education. Okay, and so with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thomas Whitmore.
Here.
Joanne Glasser Orinstine.
Here.
Michael Miller.
Here.
Kevin Shidley.
Here.
Lisa Valente. Carl Mazzaro.
Here.
Lori Rosasco Schwartz.
Here.
And Donna Sidell. Board of Finance members. Lainey McHugh.
Here.
Paul Timpinelli.
Here.
Elaine Hammers.
Here.
Martin Isaacs.
Here.
Stephen Choi.
Here.
Michael Barker.
Here.
Mark Masala.
Here.
Kristina Ellis. Vincent DiGennaro.
Here.
I do believe I saw Donna Sidell, even though we did not hear her.
Yes.
Yeah, he's on.
Yeah. I'm here.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you. And again, I'd like to welcome the members of the Education Committee, the members of the Board of Finance, and our our first selectman, Mrs. Potizaro. And we have a special guest, the auditor, Mr. Joseph Santafanti from PKF O'Connor Davies Accountants and Advisors. Last weekend, we met and we discussed the the audit and came up with a list of questions. We were not able to have the auditor at our meeting last week. He was not available, but he was available tonight. And so we're going to, he was forwarded these questions so he could be prepared. And we're going to ask those questions one at a time. Let him answer, and if anyone needs any clarification, Mrs. McHugh will call on you and we'll, we'll have additional questions and clarification before we move on. All right. So, Mr. Santafani, thank you again for being here. We'll get started here with the first question. One of the major concerns was compliance with state statutes and the Board of Ed. In cases where there was a lack of compliance with the law, policy not followed or controls were not in place, could you identify the Trumbull Public Schools or Board of Education staff or position that would usually have been responsible for following these statutes or policies or implementing the controls? Furthermore, please identify if there's a related Trumbull Public School staff position or Board of Ed Committee member that would normally be responsible for oversight of that position.
Okay, you know, normally it's the administration that would be responsible for following those. Well, any, any type of compliance, state statutes or or any other type of compliance, that probably the main two people would be the business manager and the superintendent. And then from a monitoring perspective, that really would be the Board of Ed because those are the the, those two positions would really report to the Board of Ed. There really isn't another position. You know, a staff position where they would report.
Okay. Any other questions?
Lainey.
Lori, there's a, on the feature, there's a, on the top right of your screen, there should be a raise the hand feature. To do that, but Lori Schwartz.
I'm not seeing the raise the hand picture. I will find it for my next question.
It should be right on the, on the taskbar at the bottom.
Okay, I'll find it on the next go around.
It's in with participants.
I see it.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Also, one more thing, Lori, before you talk tonight, if everybody can remember to introduce themselves as they speak.
So Lori Rosasco Schwartz, Town Council. The question I have on the responsibility, the administration, it seems to me would be responsible, the administration, the, the business unit, the business manager. I just want to understand a little bit more clearly about the process that was used in this audit. We had turnover in both of those positions. The review period included a substantial portion of time where those folks are no longer employed, but they were part of the administration and they were the business unit manager for a good part of the review period. So were those folks contacted? Were they interviewed? Was anyone with the Board of Ed contacted or interviewed, former as well as current folks? And perhaps even because of the questions of legality here, the attorney, Floyd Dugus for the Board of Ed, just want to understand how some of these comments or findings were validated through the process. I mean, it's a typical audit process after the field work is complete and the, prior to the report being issued, that it's cleared with the management. In this case, the administration prior to releasing the report. So if you could clarify that, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
For none of the prior people were contacted as a result of this, that's, you know, they have no. My experience, it hasn't ever been a productive process. Once they're no longer employees, they have no obligation. So I did not contact them. I did not contact the attorney. Either I did talk to one attorney about the, when management, the new management was trying to get clarification on the issuance of debt or issuance of the TD Bank loans. I did talk to them about the statutes and my recommendation there. And then as far as vetting this, you know, that I asked questions, but the process is determined by the board was this, the Board of Ed did not see this until it was issued.
Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to understand. So in what, what areas were these, these findings validated? Or in there's cases in the report, I think that indicated that information wasn't available. Who was actually the main contacts? Or I was looking for perhaps a list of key contacts. Didn't have anything in my, in the information I was provided. So who, who, who went through this to vet that information that wasn't made available was, was not available somewhere else or could have been found? And who vetted that these findings were in fact accurate prior to releasing the report? Doesn't sound like.
Nobody. Like I said, the draft went to the committee that, and, and I vetted if I had specific questions, but the, the board shows that this report was not released to anybody except for the board.
I just, I guess I just have some concerns about that. If, you know, there wasn't any sort of agreement that either the information was or wasn't available, or some of these comments were not to be answered in a different way from the folks that were there at the time. So that's a major concern for me.
I see Carl Mazzaro and then Michael Barker. Just in follow-up to that question before we move on, Mr. Santafani. This is Lainey McHugh, the Board of Finance Chair. In our questions that we sent, we're following our last meeting, one of the questions was for, asking you to explain your term budget support and your impact on your examination when limited or no budget support was available. And to elaborate our comments on the challenges that you had in finding necessary records and support information in each department. Did you want to touch upon that maybe in reference to this as well before we move on?
Yeah, budget support, that term is just whatever backup would support the number that's in the budget. So it could be vendor invoice, it could be, it could be the list of salaries, the list of people and their benefits, just whatever, if there's a number in the budget, what, where did the number come from? So that, that's, that's, that's what I use that line for is just what is the backup for that number? So if you say salaries are $70 million, what's, what supports $70 million? So as far as the impact, I you know, the these type of projects where the, the value is in kind of what's wrong. So it didn't really impact. I reported if I couldn't see the budget support. So I couldn't evaluate specifically that there was something, but if I but it, because it wasn't available or wasn't made available, I, I think the recommendation is, is is the more important part of it because we're looking at stuff that's kind of history at this point. The budget's done and over and that. So it's more okay. What, what, what are the policies and procedures or process that should be in place? It's one of these type of things.
Okay. Were there specific areas in which you had trouble finding information?
I think, I think that's detailed in the report. I mean, if I asked for support and didn't get it, it's, it's kind of, kind of noted area by area. So for certain, you know, and it did vary year by year also. So for the employee benefits for medical insurance, what for, I think 2020, there was actually a schedule that I did get from payroll or the insurance specialist to support that, but there was no support for the, the previous two years. So and since I think there was salary was support, so it, it varied. And then I know special ed is on here somewhere. I, I basically was provided a box that was called budget support or multiple boxes for multiple years. And I went through those trying to look for how the budget was developed, what was the backup to support the numbers? And if I didn't have it, I know that I didn't have it. And then I would go downstream where I could. So if I know this is something HR would normally perform or, or provide the business manager, then I would ask them for it. So I did get some information. You know, special ed, when it came to that, I asked the interim director for if there was anything in the office that supported how those numbers were determined for the budget and, and she indicated that there, there was, there was no records in the office from an administrative perspective. Now, I'm sure all the student records and all the stuff that belonged to the district, but there was nothing else that she could look at from an administrator perspective that, that was left in the office from the previous director left. So I had no backup for that. It wasn't in what I was provided and, and there was nothing in that office because I know that was one of the areas in the school services.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Carl Mazzaro, Town Council Education Committee. Thanks for joining us tonight, Mr. Santafanti. I just want to clarify how you conducted the audit. Did you personally do the audit? Or was there a group from your office that conducted research?
It was multiple people. I did a substantial portion of it, but I did have staff help with certain portions.
Okay. And then I, then I understand that you did not interview any personnel from the education district?
I interviewed several, you mean that currently are there? I did interview.
I know you testified that you didn't interview anybody from the past board or the past business manager or former superintendent. Is that correct?
Correct. People were currently employed. I did talk to the assistant business manager, the interim business manager, payroll person. There was, I did consider a number of interviews of people in the, in the financial area that related to the school.
Okay. So the first, the opening question inferred that there were violations of state statute can, and you seem to have concurred. Can you give us a listing of the state statutes and the types of violations you think there were?
I, I, what, that's in the report. The statutes that were tested are detailed in my report.
Yeah, I, okay, I understand that, but for, for purposes of this discussion or, you know, trying to put some detail into the discussion rather than just painting a broad brush. You mentioned something about the TD Bank loans.
The bank loans. So a page, get to the page.
I don't have that open in front of me, but.
So the three issues that I looked at were budget, we're purchasing budget transfers and issuance of debt. So TD Bank loans, Bank of America, Bank of America loans was signed by the town. The TD Bank loans were not. Under statutes, Boards of Education have no authority to issue debt. That's the governing body's responsibility. There are statutes that govern budget transfers and what, what Board of Educations have to do and at what level. So so we tested that statute, and we tested compliance with the town purchasing policy. And nor do the exceptions there.
Mr. Mazzaro, is that, does that answer your question?
No, no, I have some follow-up questions, if I may.
Okay. At our last meeting, we did talk about the executive summary and we did give an overview of the audit report. Is it needed that we return to do that at this time before moving on?
Well, we have two topics that Mr. Santafanti has brought up, the TD Bank and the purchasing policy where he said there were violations of state statutes involved for those. So I just wanted to ask some follow-up questions with respect to that.
Okay, we did at our last meeting, prepare a bunch of questions that we sent him ahead of time. Would you like to proceed through those? And when we get to the area of that, or do you want to jump to that now, sir?
Well, I'm, you know, leave that to the chair to decide how you want to proceed through it. But I just, you know, there's some questions I have, and if you want to go to all the other questions first, I just, if I.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Whitmore. Why don't we let Mr. Mazzaro complete his follow-up questions and then we'll guide through the questions that we had prepared first and then we can move on from there. Is that okay?
That sounds good. So my next question is with respect to these two issues, the TD Bank loans and, and the reported violations of the purchasing policy. Did you speak to current personnel about those two issues?
Current personnel from where?
Superintendent, the business manager.
Again, the.
Board of Finance members. All of any of the above?
No, I, I, information was provided from the purchasing department of what was bid compared to transactions that we selected for testing and determined that certain items that should have been bid under the town policy were not.
But are you saying you did not speak to anybody? You just looked at documentation and came to these conclusions?
Attained information. So I, I'm not sure I understand your question. It's kind of black and white. Kind of as a policy, purchase within follow the policy.
My question is, did you talk to any personnel about what you found?
What personnel?
The superintendent, the business manager, the Board of Ed Chairman.
Nope.
None of them.
Assistant business manager would be, ask them about the bidding policy. So it was transactional. So the superintendent, where I'm looking at history, he wasn't there at that point in time. The business manager that was there, was no longer there. So the answer is no, I didn't talk to those people, but from an audit perspective, I can clinically see whether you follow the policy or not. If I needed additional explanation, I would ask the question.
And so far, you've told me that you've only asked the assistant band, business manager a question and no one else. Is that correct?
So let's clarify what I said at the beginning. The board decided who I was going to talk to and who I was going to vet the information. So my normal process would be to sit down and walk through it. That, that process was determined by the board. That process, was it going to happen until the report was issued? At the direction of the town, that was the process.
That's fine. So as you look through documentation, if you had a question about the documentation, you either didn't ask anybody about it, or you asked the assistant business manager. Is that correct?
Or whoever else may have been responsible if we had a question.
Well, that's, I'm asking you who these people are that you spoke to? Question about any of the material you looked at?
The Board of Ed staff, if I had, if an area I tested, I had a question on it, I would ask that person. So if it was a payroll question, I would ask payroll. If it was HR, I would ask HR. Whatever information that I did, that I was looking for, I would ask. Or, but if you're asking me on a test, I can clinically see you follow the policy or not. I don't need to verify that with somebody else.
I, I'm not, I appreciate your procedure. I'm not questioning your procedure. I'm just asking who you spoke to if you had questions. And you're you sort of now generically saying, you know, whoever was involved in whatever the matters that you were looking at. And I can appreciate that, you know, for past years, personnel were no longer there to speak directly to if you had a question. Like, you know, who signed for the TD Bank loan or who authorized the policy? So let me ask a specific question about the purchasing policy. I know from looking at your report, you, you had a listing of the number of purchases, those that were bid, those that weren't bid, those that should have been bid. How did you determine those purchases that were not bid that you think should have been bid?
It was over the bid threshold. And it wasn't bid, the town purchasing agent had no record of the bid or, or a waiver or anything else. Then it's an exception to the test.
But there is the state pricing policy, it's another avenue of purchasing. Did you examine those as options for some of the purchases that were not bid?
I would have to go look at the specific work papers. If, if, if that, if, or where state bids. So if it was something that should have, that would be exempt or that would be a state bid, then we would, we would go in that direction.
Did, did you go in those directions?
I, I have, I don't have the work papers in front of me. So that's, the staff does that work. So I would have to look at it. I would have to look at if any of those met that criteria. I don't know if they did or not.
I think that's important information because you list a lot of purchases that were not bid. Doesn't mean that they were improper purchases. Because there are other processes to purchase even an amount that goes above the normal bid level.
Mr. Mazzaro.
You just indicated that you had given that your draft. Yes?
There's just, there are several people waiting with their hands up.
Okay. Well, I'll defer for the moment then. I'll come back later.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barker.
Thank you. Michael Barker, Board of Finance. One quick comment, it seems that there may be some confusion as to the process and purpose of this audit. So I would request that perhaps we reset and ask the auditor to talk through that so that we're not returning to process over and over again. The second thing, Mr. Santafanti, thank you so much for coming this evening. The question around responsibility and oversight was mine. So I just want to clarify. I do know that the business manager, the superintendent and the Board of Ed are the ultimate, ultimately responsible for all of this. But I may come back if, if you don't preempt me in each section, for instance, things around payroll. What person was operating under X, Y, or Z constraint? And did they operate under that constraint? That's, that's really the question is on, on the ground level. What, what, what individual would have been responsible for carrying out this responsibility, understanding that it ultimately accrues to the, to the administration. So that's just a clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mascola.
Hi, Mark Mascola, Board of, Board of Finance. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for coming. It's a, it's an exceptionally detailed and comprehensive report, which gives us, gives us a lot to think about. As a former auditor, I, I appreciate the challenges that come when you're going through an audit like this. And you can only really do what you can related to the information that you're provided. I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to, just wanted to thank you for coming and thank you for providing, providing the report. The questions I had are included in the list of questions which we provided previously. Thanks, Lainey.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Shidley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Kevin Shidley. With other people said, thank you very much for being here and answering these questions. I was hoping to get back to the, the main question that we were asking here initially, I, as I understand it is, you know, just tried to understand where in the process, where in the organization the failures occurred. Now, I want to be a little bit more specific, maybe put a little finer point on the question than what I was hearing from Mr. Mazzaro. And let's talk specifically then about the TD Bank notes first. And I'd like to know, if I understand correctly from your finding here, if I'm reading it correctly, because I'm not sure. I think there may be, either I'm not reading it right or there's a typo. There were six TD Bank notes that you found that were not approved by the town in keeping with our town's policies and the state statute rather, that says that the governing body of the town then must be responsible for approving and signing those, those notes or making any loans. And that the Board of Education was not empowered to make such loans or to sign such documentation. And I think I read from this and understood that the person who or the position that did that inappropriately was at the time, the business manager in the administration of the, of the Department of Education, is that, in the education, is that right? Or do I have that correctly?
Yes, the, the business managers signed the note agreement, the note agreements, yes.
Okay, and that action was contrary to state statute is what you're saying, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And as well with the, the other part of the, the state statutes was in terms of transfers, is that correct?
Budget transfers, correct.
And budget transfers over a certain amount then must also be to the, to the board, right, the Board of Education?
I think that's, that's the internal policy.
Okay.
The statute is only requires approval by the board of transfers between objects, which is salaries, benefits, purchase services. And then the board will have a policy of, at a lower level for reporting or that type of thing. But statutes require, just I'll note, there's nine objects that you, management cannot transfer from salaries to benefits. Only the board, the elected board can approve that transfer.
And then such transfers were made without you being able to find any indication in any of the meeting minutes of the Board of Education meetings that any such approval or authorization was granted. Is that correct?
It was either that there were transfers that I didn't see approval or that they may have overspent that category, which again.
Would be contrary to state statute.
Right, because they shouldn't be overspending. Right, because they shouldn't be overspending the category without getting approval.
So in looking at those meeting minutes, then, did you find any discussion of those transfers at all? And just no actual formal approval? Or was it not brought up to the board at all? In those meeting minutes?
Yeah, I have to go back and look because I'm the compliance is formal approval, so.
But did you find any, did you find any discussion of those transfers in the meeting minutes with or without any type of approval?
Yeah, again, because I'm not looking for that. I don't recall if I saw any discussion. There were a couple of transfers that were approved. So at some point, something was done. And I'm not sure what page that's on, but there were a couple of transfers that were approved in the process, not the statutes require.
Right, right. So there were some that were done correctly, but there were obviously some that weren't done correctly and that were were not contrary to the proper procedures according to the state statute. So and then finally, on to the third part, it's just to delineate these and make sure that we're clear on all of these things. In terms of the purchasing, we're not specifically talking about any violation of state statute with the purchasing, but we are rather our town's policies for purchasing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and and in those, did you look at how those purchases were made or by what positions within the Board of Education those purchases were made without going to bid? Did you look at that at all as far as, you know, where where in the process those those decisions were made without going to bid?
Yeah.
Here's what I'm trying to, here's what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to find, I'm trying to figure out if we can identify those places where the ball was dropped, basically, and going forward in the future so that we can talk about procedures and policies and ways to follow those policies or to ensure that those policies are followed. For example, did you look at whether the the purchasing manager or somebody that was usually in charge of issuing purchase orders? Whether those decisions were made at that level or whether they were acting on behalf of a superior? Did you look at that at all?
No. So we would look at, here's a purchase. It was more of that. So we didn't look at who signed the PO, which again, somebody had a, if there was a PO issue, because I think I have a comment that in some cases, purchase orders weren't being used and that that's a method of a prior of prior approval for that purchase. So.
Right, and so those cases, we have somebody signing for it or putting their name on that purchase order as initiating it, correct?
Right, right.
And in some situations, there was no purchase order when a purchase was made?
Yeah, I didn't map that to whether it was one of these that were my bid exceptions. I can look at that. But I don't, I didn't map that to say, well, this was, there was no PO and it was above the bid limit. I would have to go back and look at the data and say, yeah, those two things occurred on the same transaction. So it was more just if it was above the threshold than and should have been bad. It was just note that that should have been should have been bid versus who approved it. That that may or may not have been noted again. If there wasn't a PO, then I might not know that.
And there may be, you also noted that there are in the policy, some situations where because of the immediate need or, you know, the circumstance that certain, well, I guess that was in transfers, wasn't it? Where where you could you could make those transfers in certain circumstances, but not in in other circumstances. Did you find any indication that there was any any immediate need that would come into play in those situations?
I think I have to go back and look, but I think the town's policy has a provision for bid waiver or that type of thing. And the purchasing agent has does track that also on his purchasing log. And so if that was noted, that that process would file was filed, then it wouldn't have been an exception. If it wasn't noted, if he was, if the town purchasing agent wasn't in the loop at all, then that would show up as an exception.
Okay, one last question then, just generally, you indicated at the very beginning that that the board, that members of the Board of Ed or the Board of Ed itself as a body informed you of who you would be have access to speaking with within the faculty, I mean, within the organization, is that correct?
The Board of Ed?
Or well, who you said you were you were provided the people that you would have access to, right, or the positions that you would have access to. Did I understand that correctly?
No, I I asked to talk to whoever. There was there was nobody that that I was told that I couldn't talk to.
Okay, okay, great. All right, thanks.
Okay, um, there are a bunch of hands still up. Elaine.
Elaine, you're on mute. Madam Chairman, you're also on mute.
Sorry, we'll come back to Elaine.
I'm unmuted.
There you are. Okay, sorry about that. I just, I had two questions. One about the transfers that you said were made without the board approval. Did you review the finance committee meetings where is usually where they'd make those transfers?
They did not because they don't have the authority to approve the transfers. Statute say Board of Ed.
Right, finance committee of the Board of Ed usually meets, recommends the transfers, and then it goes to the Board of Ed agenda. When they accept the minutes of that meeting, they approve the transfers. That's my understanding of board process, but I guess if no one at the Board of Ed was spoken to, that wouldn't have been clarified.
But the statute say Board of Ed approval, and I can't read the minutes and see Board of Ed approval.
Okay, and their position typically is when they approve their finance committee, which made the transfers, they're approving. The board is approving it. The other question I have is in Exhibit One, where you talk about the items that were not properly bid. We don't get a sense of the dollar threshold or the items to have an understanding of whether or not those were the ones they, excuse me, they used to state bid for. Is there some way to get a better understanding of that? And again, as as someone was suggesting, are these these purchases being made at the school level or they may being made at the central office level?
Without looking at all the details, I would have to go back and into the analysis and pull that data out. I don't. I can't answer the question at this point.
So at the time you discovered it, though, none of them had any way to explain it to you?
Correct.
I guess where I'm confused is I'm used to our internal auditor who prepares something, takes her findings to the individual department so they can explain to her if she's found something or she's been misinformed. You said that your process, you said the board did not tell you to do it that way. And I'm a little confused because we're talking about three different boards. So I'm not sure what board gave you your direction.
Elaine, this is from the Education Committee of the Town Council.
Okay, so the Town Council was the body.
Council is the body that commissioned the audit. And the point of the audit is to decide whether they broke the rules. So whether or not there was somebody there who could explain it, he's telling you that he has the evidence that the rules were not followed that we set up with the town. So our purchasing rules and things like that.
I hear that, but what I'm not hearing is if, in fact, they were going off a state bid, for example, then they were following the rules. If, in fact, the Finance Committee approves the transfers and in fact, the full Board of the Board of Education accepts their minutes, they are accepting those transfers. They don't necessarily list them separately, but whatever, I get it.
I also, in follow up to the discussion about the TD Bank loans, those performance reviews, the performance contracting rather, did come before the Board of Finance, I believe, in 2013 originally, when they talked about it. I believe it's the process in which they incurred the debt for the performance review, for the not performance review, sorry, wrong job. The performance contracts, that's in question. So who was able to sign the notes and how did they secure the loans for that? So I hope that's helpful. I think that they went to the Board of Finance, if the records are right, 12 December 4, 2013. Joanne.
Thanks, Lanny. Joanne Glasser-Warrenstein, Town Council Education Committee. So I'm not an auditor or 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 any kind of remote money person. So I have a question about process in general. Mr. Centafanti, thank you for being here tonight. And I I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Mascola or Mr. Centafanti or both of you, but in terms of the normal process of an audit, I'm just wondering if it's usually something that is done by looking at records and looking at transactions and not so much interviewing people in positions. Or if that's something that is typically done. Again, I know nothing about what the process of audits usually is like. So I'm just trying to understand that better.
Okay, I guess from my perspective, you look at the scope, it's it's not technically an audit. It's really an operational review, which is different than an audit. So certainly where some things will say that might be like platter procedures, such as looking at transactions or looking at bids, but there's a lot of things that are, that's more analysis or review or some of it was internal control based, which is where the interviews come into play. How do you do this? How do you pay a check? How do you do payroll? Type of thing. So it's really, I worked from the scope of what the town wanted is the project. So it's really more of a operational review than it is an audit, like the audit of the town's books and records, the annual audit. So so it's a little bit different of a process because of because of the type of process and and the questions that were asked.
Okay, and then I have one other question, which is if the if ultimately, the superintendent, business manager and the Board of Ed are the people who are responsible and and there are things that don't follow state statute that have been practicing, have been practices that have been going on for years, are any of these people legally responsible, financially responsible or, you know, in any way responsible for these problems that we see in the procedures?
I can't answer anything legally. I can tell you from from the audit process that this Board of Ed statute is just not, it's not followed very closely by any Board of Ed. It's one of those things that I have, I do have issues with multiple. So the fact that that wasn't done is not uncommon, doesn't doesn't make it right, but it is something that I see all the time and there really isn't any formal penalty or anything else with it. It just to be the same as if the Town Council didn't approve a budget transfer. I don't. It's the same vein as as that. So it's, you know, the records demonstrate that and, you know, where the money was spent. It's just the process wasn't followed. It doesn't mean that expenditure wasn't a valid expenditure or anything. It's just there is a process to kind of get permission first before you spend the money by getting the transfer.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Tesoro, then Mr. Sinto, and then Mrs. Schwartz.
Hey, this is Vicky Tesoro, the first selectman. Just want to say thank you, Mr. Centafanti, again for being here this evening. You know, I think we're, we know all of us here this evening, why we're here is to review this report, to ask the auditor questions about the report itself. I would hope that our friends on the other side of the aisle would not try to discredit our auditor for the job he did and therefore to discredit the audit. That's not why we're here. I would find that actually horrendous that that was the case. So, Mr. Centafanti, let me ask you a question about about the process just quickly. Did you do anything different in this process that you would have done differently in any of your other audits that you normally do?
You mean these type projects?
Right. I mean, is this what you normally do in this topic of an operational review in another community that you've done the same sort of work?
Yeah, the only thing that would be slightly different is I would normally vet some of the report, which I did some of the significant areas, but with with the person I'm writing up the findings about. So normally I would see it before it went final, just to make sure I had 100% of the information. But the process was what was the same as I would do in the interviews, looking at documents, getting my questions answered. That that process was exactly the same as anything else I had done.
Right. And last night at the Board of Ed meeting, the business manager gave a a quick report of the audit. And at one point, he did say that he spent an hour and a half with you reviewing the findings of your report. I'm sure that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure. You're sorry to interrupt. Yes, you are correct. There were certain things that I had questions on that I so as I was finalizing the report, I gave them just the findings specifically to look at and say, does this make sense? Do you have any other input into this? Again, he was brand new and the other Assistant Business Manager was the other person who did review it because she has perspective since she's been there through the this cycle. So they they looked at if I had a question on something, I asked them to read it and said, do you have, is that accurate as far as you know? So, yes.
And did you, you also did that, I would assume, with other departments that you you reviewed, maybe with payroll, HR, shared some of your findings with them as well?
I really vetted that mostly just through those two, just to.
And did you have an opportunity to speak with the interim superintendent and the interim business manager at any point in time when you were doing the audit or the your review?
Yes, I did interview both of them as part of this process to get their understanding of things and get get additional information from them and what they saw, what their concerns were. So both of those individuals I did interview.
Okay, and just responding to Elaine's comment about the minutes of the Finance Committee. Quite a bit of time reviewing those minutes, Elaine, and I would suggest perhaps that you do the same if you have some time. And you will see that, you know, there weren't many times that there was a a discussion of transfers or the approval of transfers transfers at that level. I can't say that I reviewed all of the minutes because some of them were not posted where they should have been on the town website. So that's just a matter of interest for everyone that if they have some time, they can take a look at minutes for themselves to see about the process. I mean, we're here tonight as we go through this report. We are aware that there were problems that happened. And what we're trying to do here is to make sure that those problems are fixed and that they never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tesoro. Mr. Sinto.
Hi, Tony Sinto, Town Council. I don't have a question for the order. I just have a general question. I actually have a solution. We used to get financial reports from the Board of Ed like a couple of times a month, but we haven't been getting that. We used to get financial reports from the Board of Ed like a couple of times a month, but we haven't been getting them. So I found, reached out to somebody who was getting them. I come to find out that they're sending the that email to our town council email addresses that Bill we had that problem back in May, they're still sending him to those email addresses. So we're not getting the emails for the the financial reports that the Board Ed sends out. You know, every couple of weeks, they used to send them out a couple of times a month. And so they're sending them to those, you know, tony.cinto@trumble email address that that's not working. So we're not getting those email addresses. And I don't know if anybody else has gotten that information from the Town Council. I have not gotten it. At least I haven't, I haven't seen it in months. So I did reach out to somebody who was getting them and they noticed that the email addresses were going to that email address bill. So just maybe the people who send that out at the Board of Ed at the office could send them to Margaret and then Margaret can forward them to us. That's just an observation that I found out. We're not getting that information. We stopped for at least the last eight months, probably. So that's just a general thing. So I don't know if you guys have seen that or not. I'm not sure. Unless Bill, they fix that, you can let me know. Maybe you fixed that problem with the email.
Those email addresses no longer exist.
Okay, so they're sending the email address, they're sending that information to email addresses that don't exist.
Right. So they should be getting a bounce. But do you know who sends those? I'll reach out to them.
I think we used to get them from like the Board of Ed, I don't know. Maybe like Denise, I can't remember what her last name was.
I'll reach out to her.
One of those, yeah. So just something that I found in my travels. This was all brought up. I went back to try to find that and I could not find it. So I decided to bring it up. I'll let you guys go forward with the other things. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay. Mrs. Schwartz, you took your hand down?
No, I did want to just respond to Mrs. Ornstein's question about the process. And I do want to make it known that I've spent close to fifteen years as an auditor. I'm currently the director of a audit department. As we speak, I've been in both public and internal audit. So I do want to make it clear, though, that the process typically as it stands is once audit findings are found, they are typically vetted to make sure that the information or the findings that are being put forth, particularly in cases where there's a question of legality or not following state statutes, are vetted with the the people in charge prior to the audit being released. So I am a bit hard pressed to understand how, you know, we can issue an audit report without having gone through that vetting process. So I just want to make that comment. I have significant firsthand experience, close to fifteen years in audit. So I do know from what I'm speaking. And I'm, again, just concerned about the vetting process of these findings. I'm not disputing perhaps that they are factually accurate. I just don't understand how a report can be released prior to making sure that those those findings are in fact accurate and complete.
Thank you. Okay. Don Kentaffio.
Thank you, Don Kentaffio, Town Council. Joe, I have a question. Are audits typically verified by those being audited?
In general, recommendations might be to make sure, we'll say, the condition, you know, that that is just being part of the process, we'll say, with recommendations for the annual audit. When I do recommendations, they would be vetted through management normally. If it's, if it's you know, there's certain, certain items that you know, even though the management will see them, but like lack of segregation duties or certain, certain items are kind of black and white as far as if it's an internal control issue, then the vetting is not really a vetting process because this is what was observed. Then in that case, but generally strive to make sure that I have all my facts straight. Because again, and sometimes in the review process, all the information doesn't come out the first time. So it's that is process the majority of the time.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for taking the time to speak to all these questions. I know it's not easy and I guess I would just suggest maybe we go back to asking a couple more questions that were put forward to the by the committee.
I believe we've covered some of them. And I am keeping track. I do see one more hand. Paul, is this something, Mr. Timpanelli, is this something you'd like to speak now or you want to wait till we get through a few more questions?
You can get through a few more questions if you need to.
All right. Why don't we do that and then leave your hand up and we'll come back to you.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Centafani, in the questions that we sent you, we asked if you had outlined what constitutes appropriate backup to entry record and retention requirements? Were you identified that there were faults?
For the journal entries you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Well, for that, that type of thing, it would just depend on the nature of the entry, what adequate support would be. So this was a specific area related to cafeteria and some allocation of costs where there wasn't any support for the amounts that they were saying were attributable to the cafeteria fund. It was just written on a piece of paper. So if you said custodian cost eighty thousand dollars, there was nothing to support the thousand dollars. So, you know. So that was a specific example because but in theory, every journal entry should have some sort of backup to it to support. Why are we doing the entry? It's a correction for recording this or but there are state statutes around cafeteria funds. So that was the documentation then really should be at a higher level. If you were going to take cafeteria funds and transfer them to the general fund or are you going to push costs basically to the cafeteria fund? There's a higher threshold as far as what the supporting documentation should be.
And have you made recommendations as to what those should be?
I'm sure there was a recommendation that said that it should be based upon actual costs. So so if you're charging insurance or I forget what some the other pieces were, there should be backup to show here's the actual costs that the general fund paid for. And we're going to move that actual cost to the cafeteria fund.
I didn't write that question, so I'm hoping that's okay for who was asking.
Yeah, so that was specific to that transaction.
Okay. At the Education Committee, there was discussion about a Board of Education credit card. Were you aware of credit card or credit cards? And if so, what expenses were paid with that card? And was there documentation of who was approved to use the card and if there were present outstanding balances?
Yes, I was aware of the credit card. I think I don't have a list of who was authorized use. It seemed to be most of the purchases assist the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent office, or at least those are the categories a lot of the items were charged to. So there were items like as such as field trips for future business leaders. There was some visitation program. There was hotels. There was registration fees, website fees, training fees, travel, rental cars, food for meetings. Again, these are just from the notes that I made on because they I did pick some of those credit card payments as in the transaction testing. So I'm sure there's a lot more, but but those are some of the items that for the transactions that I did look at. So who actually has authorization, the district would, I don't have a list. I didn't ask specifically what authorization. I was more looking at what was the support. I can I can tell you that as far as credit card backup, I've never seen someone do such a thorough job as as the AEP person there. Usually there's some gaps, but there was a piece of paper, you know, there was backup to every charge. So I give it credit for that. And as far as there's no outstanding balance, it's paid monthly.
Thank you. Were you able to tell through your audit if the Board of Education balanced out at the end of the year?
I guess I'm not sure. They didn't over you didn't over expend the budget in any year. So I think on pages fourteen and fifteen, the difference always came out to zero or two thousand eighteen, twelve hundred dollars. Again, of course, that was after applying the excess cost monies to balance the budget, but they did not, at least officially. And I can read eighteen and nineteen to the audit, they did not overspend their budget. And then in two thousand and twenty, well, I don't know if that audit has been completed, but what I looked at, their general ledger that I had, they did not overspend, but that was after applying the million, the million fifty five thousand, which is on page fifteen of excess cost money to balance the budget.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move into the area of the HR Department and payroll. Before I do that, Mr. Isaac?
Thank you. Very brief questions. I want to just make sure I understand one thing. I think you touched on this before. I just want to be specific. It's two part question. Is there a penalty or consequence to the town or an individual for not following statutes?
Again, these statutes, I haven't seen seen one. So I mean, that's up to the state to do something if there was a reporter concerned. I've never seen any mistake involved in any budget transfer issue. And I've never seen the stake get involved with the Board of Education issuing debt or TD Bank loans. Like it's again, even though the statutes don't allow it, it's somewhat a common practice. So I do see that in a considerable number of other communities also. Back with the Apple leases, which was more of a lease, but it's kind of now moved past the whole lease concept of replacing computers every three years to actually go into a bank like TD Bank and getting a loan. So
Understood. I actually wanted to go in a slightly different, different direction with regard to the cafeteria funds. The program's been run in deficit for the last number of years. Does that violate a statute or it does not violate a statute to run accounts into deficit?
There's not a statute specifically that that addresses overspending cafeteria. Just normally from the audit process, I would after a year or two, if it's not being addressed, then I usually have a recommendation that Board of Education needs to kind of fund the deficit because it's I refer to as printing money. If you're spending money you don't have over here, it's not impacting the budget. It's still it's still something that has to be addressed. So
Well, I guess that was my related question at the reason I wanted to talk about. At the end, you were saying we did, we did balance out the books, but what's been puzzling me is when we run a deficit in cafeteria. It strikes me, we're not balancing out the book. So can I get your comment on that? How should I be thinking about that?
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of different funds or books. So the general fund was balanced out. But then there's issues in special revenue funds that would you call special revenue funds with multiple different programs? And then technically cafeteria is special revenue fund. So and now all the funds were balanced, you know, balanced as far as not being in a deficit position. So from the cafeteria standpoint, I normally give the district, you know, my clients, when I'm doing the audit, a couple of years to address it. So you got to raise prices or cut costs. You got to do something. So this is what it becomes chronic or if it keeps increasing, then that I normally have a recommendation that says the Board of Ed has to fund that deficit.
Okay, but the recommendation though, so I believe right now the cafeteria account is in deficit a million dollars. I may be wrong on that. But your recommendation would be that it does not have to be made up in one year? Is that what you're saying?
That's normally my approach, yeah. But they have to show me a plan and otherwise I'm going to make it official and say you need to deal with this. Again, I can only recommend, but there's no statute again that says anything. So it's just kind of the best practice. And that, you know, that same logic applies to any my town side, if there's a fund that has a huge deficit, that there has to be a plan to solve it because and the only plan is general fund. There's no other sources of revenue normally.
Thank you.
Mr. Timpanelli? Paul, you have to unmute.
You're muted. You're muted.
There we go.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Santa Fanny. I want to add my voice to those that have thanked you for joining us tonight and providing us with your time and your willingness to answer our questions and address our concerns. More importantly, thank you for providing us with a very detailed, comprehensive roadmap as to how we might improve our operations within our Board of Education so that we might provide them with a good operating foundation. Can you answer for me the simple question of if you have it off the top of your head? How many such operational reviews or financial audits have you or you personally or your firm conducted of Boards of Education around the state of Connecticut? And in those analyses, if you happen to know that approximate number, did you discover any Boards of Education which conducted themselves regularly the way our board has conducted itself in terms of not regularly reviewing their budget, regularly looking at finances and regularly having in place good solid financial controls? What I'm getting at here is trying to determine whether or not we behave any differently than other towns that you have looked at within your experience within Board of Education financial operations.
Yeah, that from a broad perspective, I probably in thirty plus years worked with a hundred different, hundred twenty different communities. So I have seen you know, things that are run very well in between and things, you know, that are a little looser. I've done these type of things of Board of Eds or something similar, maybe not quite as comprehensive, probably twenty different times. And I've seen other communities also bid the work that I may not have actually got. So it is something that you do see some of the time. But again, it varies across.
Well, if I might follow up on that with one more specific question. Is it typical, for example, for a Board of Education, which typically meets monthly, to have on its agenda a financial review of their current balance, a financial review of their current budget operation?
Yeah, at a minimum, they should be looking at the budget and actual status of their budget. Yes, that that would be typical as part of the meeting.
So it is unusual for that not to occur on a regular basis?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other hands at the moment. So we'll move back to our questions. In your discussion with the Board of Education HR Department, did you receive an explanation as to why their spreadsheet for hires and terminations for the July one, two thousand seventeen through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty was incomplete? How did this affect your examination?
I didn't receive any specific explanation other than it was probably just a matter of time. It didn't it didn't really impact what I was doing because all I did is confirm basically they didn't have adequate procedures in place for position management, as they call it. So new hires, terminations, what does the budget say? Who can we afford to hire type thing? So the fact that that analysis wasn't complete just kind of validated that they weren't, they didn't have procedures in place to make sure that you can afford to hire somebody before you hire. It was a composition management normally. So I didn't take it any farther because that was enough evidence to say, well, if you don't have this data, there's no way you would be able to to know, you know, that the whole thirty nine powers, which is actually a little less than that, but those type of things. Decisions weren't being made based upon that information.
Okay, thank you. There are two employees in that department in payroll. But one of those positions has been vacant for more than a year. Did they explain, have any But one of those positions has been vacant for more than a year. Did they explain have any explanation as to why that position had been left vacant?
No, nothing specific. It just that the position, somebody moved out of that position and it never got filled. And so the the. You know, it was mentioned maybe to create budget savings, but. As mentioned, other places in the report, this is an internal control issue. It's a lack of segregation. So this is kind of a critical area. And also from the backup standpoint, but you know, there wasn't any. Specific reason why the position wasn't filled, although I think it's just the budget.
Okay, two follow up questions to that. And then I see Mr. Masaro's hand. At at the time, it had been noted at one point that there was not somebody cross trained in the payroll department in the process. Should the knees need arise? Were you able to ascertain if there is somebody cross trained at this time?
Yeah, I I don't think somebody was cross trained to be able to do the the whole payroll. But again, I'd have to reconfirm that, but but based upon my discussions, I. Nobody was backing up that that the payroll person was pretty much doing the whole thing. And and there wasn't anyone else there that was being trained how to do it.
Okay, you did note segregation concerns in your report. Was it within your scope to ensure that all payments were valid?
No, that would be, I'd still be doing that if the volume is is pretty high. So we did. We didn't do any payroll testing as part of this, so it was just more understanding the process.
Okay. So was it, it wasn't within your scope then to test whether everyone receiving a paycheck is an employee rather than a contractor? Or anything like that?
That wasn't specifically in the scope either.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Masaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Carl Masaro, Town Council Education Committee. Mr. Santa Fanny, a couple of questions. There were three annual audits of of the town, including the Board of Ed. Did you review those in the context of of your operational review?
I did reference the audit to to agree certain things, verify that that wasn't recorded. Yes.
Okay, and so I understand there were monthly financial reports issued either out of the superintendent's office or the business manager's office or the board. Did you review those reports in conjunction with your operational audit?
Nope, I was aware that they prepared some reports offline. But they weren't specifically reviewed, but that wasn't. Other than knowing that was a part of the scope.
But okay, you did match. Let me withdraw that question. You did indicate that annually, they were the board for these three years were not over budget. They were matched up with excess funding at the end of the year.
Did you finish the question? You were breaking up.
Okay, sorry, nothing I can do about that. You get the question or no?
No, ask that question again, Carl, please.
Um, so my my question was at the at the end of the year. You indicated for these three audit periods. Board did not overspend its budget. Is that correct?
For two years that I can compare to the audit for twenty, I I don't know if the audit's been completed. I. What I was provided, un-audited, did not. Show the overspent for twenty eighteen and nineteen. I could agree to the audit and it was not overspent. Again, after applying the excess cost grant.
So. For for fiscal year ending June thirty twenty, your your report didn't. Cover the entire fiscal year. Is that right?
All I'm just differentiating is I did look at what the general ledger said through June twenty, but. Again, they're unaudited numbers, so I don't know. I don't know what the ending result was. So I can tell you the general ledger provided after applying the excess cost. Cost show they spent a hundred percent of the budget.
Okay, I I understand you. Didn't do a full dollar for dollar audit. Okay. Can I ask another question about the TD bank loans? Is there an outstanding obligation on those or were they retired?
Well, there's a considerable amount outstanding. They've been doing them every year for five or six years. So that's.
Carl.
Somewhere in the report.
Yes.
Laney, again, I just want to let you know that the TD bank loans were renegotiated this just recently. The indigenous help to do that with the Board of Education. They're now written through the town. Those are the performance contract loans. There were. They were recasted. That would be within the last six months. So.
That's the Bank of America loan, just to.
Yes.
That's not the TD bank.
Yeah, that's different.
No, the TD bank loans are the ones that they're deciding how to move forward with for the computers. And they'll be moving them to, it looks like Bank of America. That's in process right now. That has not come to the Board of Finance or Town Council yet.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the para information that you provided? I think a lot of us noticed that the budget. Called for a certain number of paras and that the audit discovered a larger number. Can you, were you able to determine if if those are all full time paras? Above the budgeted number?
I have to look if they're full time, but they did give me the information on the paras and. Again. To give credit, I that wasn't something I discovered. That was something that that was communicated to me that was an issue. So I did ask questions about it. But. That was a specific question here, if I can find what page, but there was the pair is varied. Somewhere in the thirties, didn't quite get up to thirty nine. So there was history of three years. I'm pretty sure much they were pretty sure they were full time. They were all charged to, you know, the same account that had other pairs that were were in the. In that budget line, and then there were additional pairs that that were not in the the budget line.
How do you, why do you assume they were all full time? They could have been substitute pairs like we have substitute teachers? You know, can you differentiate that?
I I'd have to go back and look at what maybe. So I asked for the information of how many, but I didn't. Based upon. What they were implying is that they were full time. They are were substitute, but they were just working full time. They were called, well, they were called actually not substitute extra help.
I'm just asking the question to find out, you know, whether. You know, the board budget was moved to a point to hire all these additional. Paras. Yes, number more.
There was no budget transfer.
Happen if that was the case, or if some of them were just substitutes. And you're really having a a number that's much lower in terms of a full time para.
There was no budget transfer. They just overspent the line by hundreds of thousands of dollars every year.
The power line.
Yes, that the extra help para line.
Were you able to determine why, what what they were for? Such as state mandated special ed paras?
I didn't evaluate what they were for, just. In theory, if you're always paying three hundred over, then you would probably budget, adjust your budget to be. The right number. But that didn't happen. They just kept budgeting the same number and kept spending over every year.
But you couldn't, didn't find an explanation why that was happening?
Nobody really wanted to answer that question.
You asked it?
Yeah, why wouldn't we budget the right number? The person who did the budget wasn't there.
Well.
So you ask HR.
A lot of answers to that question.
There is, but it was known. Everybody knew it was being done. Because multiple people brought it up to me as an issuer and concern.
Well, I mean, you know, there are certain mandates to have paras in certain areas and, you know. Until things happen during your fiscal year that maybe you have to get. I'm just asking if you.
To evaluate that.
Backup. Okay, thank you. I have no other question.
If I could, please, Mr. Santa Fanny, sort of backing up on on Mr. Masaro's question. How are these paras paid for? If if they kept underfunding the budget, where did this money come from? Is there any any paper trail there?
Well, there's there's no trail because they just. Because they weren't properly doing budget transfers. So if this line's underspent, at the end of the day, somewhere else is. I mean, this one's over, so there's other lines that are under, but there's no mapping. Again, that's the point of doing the budget transfers and. And and managing it that way. They just spent. Overspent the lines, and so there was no real source and until the end. That they would apply some of the excess cost money. So there was nothing direct, but. The indirect part is other lines were underspent because that one was over.
Thank you.
There are three more hands up. I do have a quick follow up, though. So when Mr. Isagno came in as our interim superintendent. He indicated that there was evidence that we were in significant deficit. And. It was felt that COVID related savings is why they balanced at the end of the year. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that was. Discussion with the business manager, that's basically. The major region, region, he said that they were able to eliminate that deficit. I'm sure he did some other things, but the major reason he said was what was COVID.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm going to go to Dawn Cantafio, then Elaine Hammers.
Okay, I'm kind of a follow up to that. People wanted to know why Ralph had to do away with many positions. It was because we were in a deficit. And does he know, do you, Joan, know why or how we got to that point?
How you got to the deficit point?
Yeah.
You know, I. I I don't know. It's 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 a large budget. It's 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 complicated. Again, there was clearly lines that were consistently under budgeted. So that would be a contributor factor. There's some other budget things, just guessing on. Attrition and and, you know, savings and then that type of thing, if those things did come in. So I I think. Again, going back to having budget support and understanding and again, things certainly do change. And then doing the transfers and in in that position. Management, those are the the tools that would that would drive that, but it's hard. To 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 look at. And again, if I had better data, you could, you know, part of it could be they hired more teachers or again, special ed's always a huge variable, just at every single community. So that it's hard. Well, to to see specifically, but those are some of definitely some of the contributing factors to why. Why the budget is always that tight and they're spending a hundred percent and and we're projecting. Being over until until the end.
And just one other question. Can I ask you, are some of these questions more for a forensic audit? That we would get more answers to some of these questions if we thought that was needed, or are you comfortable with the amount of information that you got?
Well. It's very difficult. I guess I'm just gonna upfront and and these type of projects is difficult to do this by RFP because. You set a scope and without sitting down and talking to you and understanding really what. Your objective is, what you're looking for and getting more details. So I have to bid the scope having zero information. So at some point, it just becomes, I could do a lot more work, but I already went. Seventy hours over my projected. Amount of time to do what I already did. So I can. You know, time and money become a restriction. If you if you want. To do more, you certainly could do more, but the way this project was scoped. It's a, I did what I could. You know, and following the scope and trying to provide information back, but there's certainly. A lot more going on, a lot more I could do, but it's. That would have to be another project.
So you're limited with the scope that you have and and really financially what we gave you.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And you have done a great job. Thank you. You're on mute, Laney.
Sorry about that. I have a new puppy. I got to keep myself on mute otherwise. I I'm going to go to Elaine Hammers next, and then if not, I saw Mark Mascola's hand was up and it's back down. Mark, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Okay, um, I have two questions because I'm trying to follow something. I think both of Mr. Timpanelli and the auditor referred to the fact. And I'm I'm sure he phrased it that the board was not keeping track of their expenses and. I think Paul asked if that was normal or was that just our board of ed? Now, maybe I misunderstood Paul's question. I pulled up just, I know we are getting the Board of Ed. Agendas every two weeks and I'm looking at the last one I got. And roughly thirty thirty one pages out of fifty one pages are financial data. Where the original budget was, the transfers, the revised, the expended. The committed, the over or under available. Beyond this thirty one pages that appears to come once a month, I believe, not not both of their meetings, but once a month. Is there something specific? We're looking for them to follow that they're not following. I I see that they're looking at the scholarship fund, the special funds. The grant funds, everything is in this financial report. Are we missing something? I guess I'm asking Mr. Santa Fanny.
Okay.
Missing something?
No. You know, budget management is is more what what the comments about. So. Just because you get information, it's what you what you do with the information. I don't. I mean, are we talking currently that you're getting this information or you've been they've been getting it the whole time?
Well, the agendas we get are pretty pretty much the same every month. I mean, obviously not. Then the items on the agenda certainly change. But the format of the reports is typical, same as the Board of Finance gets, the the Board of Ed is getting money, whether they're. Discussing it or just approving it, but they are getting it. And I thought the implication was they weren't getting it and they weren't reviewing it.
Well, I I couldn't evaluate whether we're reviewing or not. I know they were getting some. They were getting something again, if there's been different business managers. There. So I know there was some report they were getting. It was, I I refer to it as offline. They weren't getting the report right out of the system. It was something that was prepared in Excel instead of just giving them the full detail budget and actual. So I'm not sure if they had the right level of information to see some of this or not. But my the recommendation would be that the board should get exactly what the general ledger says and not something that's reformatted.
It looks like they're getting budget, actual transfers and all that, whether it's. Right off Munis or not, I can't tell from this report. I know that a couple of occasions, the Board of Finance. Finds the Munis of, uh, reports, shall we say, difficult. Uh, and we actually have asked to have it exported into Excel. Doesn't mean it's been, it's the same data. They just export it. Because it's easier for us to follow. So I do think, at, at least I see this one is thirty-one pages. I haven't, you know, while we're talking, I haven't had the time to go pull back. Three years worth, but it did appear the board got it. The other comment, um, you noticed a few times you use the term. Underfunded. In their budget process, but. I, I'm sure, as you're aware, the board asks for everything they think they need. And then the town, the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, rather, the Town Council, give them what they're willing to give them. And what they think the town can afford. So in some cases, we have been told right up front by the business manager that this is not going to be enough. Particularly sometimes, uh, as you're aware, as all towns suffer from the special education issue. They don't know what, while they know the students they have today, they don't know who's suddenly gonna get an IEP or who's gonna move in. So they do move it around. Are we saying they shouldn't move it, or are we saying it's just a process we don't like?
I'm saying they don't move the budget around, so, so they, they're not managing information correctly. So if three new kids move in the district, that costs X amount, then somehow they should be moving money from somewhere. And with board approval to fund that line, so they know that they need that amount of money. I'm saying that process didn't happen. They just. Most of the lines, because there are minimal transfers, are just overspent. So it's not managed with, I have information. Something changed, so let me change the budget. That didn't happen.
Okay, okay. And if they were to request that the excess cost fund be part of the budget. When we don't know necessarily in the end what the state's gonna give us, you think that's appropriate to include it up front or not to include it?
Every town looks at it differently and, and just in my experience, it just makes sense. Not for the town not to budget that money, because it, it seems to always be needed. So in, in a lot of my clients, excess cost money goes into the grant fund with all the other grants. And it is spent there and managed that way. Again, other towns, it's in the general fund and, and they see where they settle up. So it's, it becomes. Left that officials budget philosophy on how you want to manage that, but it, it is a, a tough thing to manage. That's why I do recommend that, that the Board of Ed non-lapsing fund, unfortunately. They haven't had any monies to put into that, but, but that is a, a great way to kind of mitigate some of the special ed. Fluctuations. So I, I, I think that there's any way to have a way to manage that and have funds that are used for that purpose when things change. That, that works the best long-term.
But that money doesn't come to them until the end of the year, because they don't know what it's gonna be, and in some cases, it's over, well over a million dollars. So wouldn't they have to wait till the end of the year to make the transfers? Because they don't know it's coming.
Well. They would make the transfers, assuming it's not coming until it is coming, but it's, it's paid multiple times during the year. The biggest piece does come at the end, but it is paid multiple times. It's the only grant. Education grant that is based upon current activity, like the C S is based upon last year's numbers. Those type of things. Special ed is reimbursed based upon current year expenditures. So it makes it difficult to manage because of that.
Thank you.
You know, just to point on, on that, Elaine, talking and referring to under budget of things. You know, in this eighteen, nineteen and twenty fiscal year, when you look at page thirty-six and thirty-seven in the report. It, um, it talks about payroll for, um, for the, uh, high school. Police support and, uh, and security guards. And, you know, in the eighteen, two thousand eighteen, for security guards, there was no. No overtime at all expended and, um, yet the actual was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, that's a big difference. In two thousand nineteen, they did, uh, put fifty-five thousand in there. And they spent a hundred and nineteen, so they were sixty-four thousand dollars in debt. Uh, and overbalanced with that. And then in twenty, they raised it to seventy-four and they spent ninety-three. So I know one of the recommendations and, you know, very similar with the, with the police department, we had. Shortages of thirty-nine, nine, thirty-eight, one, and last year due to COVID, it was only ten thousand. But when you see the history of that and you're not making those adjustments. You're looking at, at deficits. I mean, there's just no way to think about that. And so I, I think what needs to be done is, is a budget that's realistic. You know, and you can, you can see, look at that three-year average, and let's post that, that three-year average. As what we need in our, our upcoming budget. Because that way it would hopefully be a little closer to, to what's necessary to fund that item.
Okay, um, two quick follow-up points, and then I see Michael Barker, Marty Isaac and Kevin Shively all have their hands up. Two things in, in regards to the excess cost reimbursement. Mr. Sanifani, my understanding is that money's already been spent, so that reimbursement is, is money that they've already put out from their budget. When it comes back in, correct?
Correct, correct.
So how they account for that money, that it's, i- if they've already made that expenditure, that's plugging a hole they already have, correct?
Well, it just depends on how you budget. Do you, but do they budget net or they budget gross for those costs? Because conceptually, and again, it does change, if you, you know, you have a hundred and twenty students and this is what they're gonna cost, and again. Special ed is a lot more than just the excess cost kids, but. So if you, in a perfect world, that if all the kids cost exactly what you budgeted. And, and that's the full cost is included in the budget, then the excess cost money wouldn't be needed. Because the budget was fully funded. Everything happened perfectly, so that million dollars would, wouldn't be needed by the Board of Ed to balance the budget. But if they budget now, if they budget the special ed costs and say, well, we know we're gonna get a million dollars, so we're gonna reduce our budget by a million dollars. So it just becomes a budget philosophy. How, how are they developing the budget? And the other variable then is, 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 as things change. I P's change, students move in district, those type of things. That's where the excess cost normally. Conceptually, in a perfect world, that's when they would need that money, but because, because those costs went up. They would also get more of the reimbursement, because it varies year to year, only because it's a, it's a fixed pool. The state isn't reimbursing everyone. Based upon their costs, it's, the state puts away whatever the number is, fifty million dollars, and everybody gets their share. So Darian's costs go up a lot more than yours. They're gonna get more money out of that pool, because it's a fixed pool. So, so there's a lot of variables with that, but. So it's just part is understanding how do they budget. So do they budget a hundred percent of the tuition costs or, and, and all the other costs? The special ed, then if everything worked perfectly, they wouldn't need the excess cost to balance their budget. But nothing works like that simple.
Well, it would be nice if it was simple, but this is a good time with a new administration. Hopefully they'll. We'll be able to help guide them in how they craft their budget and how they're looking to move forward with that. Um, and the other is to Elaine's, um, point about the reports that, that are included. You know, it's great that they get reports. But, you know, what are they actually doing with those reports? Are they asking questions about the numbers? Are they taking action on those reports? Um, are they giving any direction with it? So it's great that they, those numbers are there, but I, I think I'd like to see a little bit more of a plan on how they're. Um, actually following it, um, kind of how, you know, we're supposed to on the Board of Finance as well. I'd like to move on to, uh, Michael Barker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a, a request for you and for Mr. Whitmore going forward. We're almost two hours into this process this evening, and we barely scratched the surface. There've been some good questions asked. There've been some questions asked as though the person has not read the report. And what would be usual, and I think Councilman Schwartz and Mr. Mascola would back me up on this, is that since we have the auditor here. The auditor would generally have, have presented the audit to us, and then we could ask questions on the basis of that presentation as well as our own research. But since we haven't had that chance this evening, I would just request that we schedule a meeting going forward, uh, where we do have that, uh, that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac.
I just wanna, uh, one quick comment with regard to underfunding. Um, I mentioned this briefly before, but I think it bears mentioning. Because we were talking about whether, um, the, the, the budget is funded correctly or not. When we allow funds to run into deficit, everything goes haywire. You know, several years ago, the cafeteria fund had a balance of somewhere between six hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand. Cafeteria fund is now in deficit a million dollars. Last year at the close of the fiscal year, special revenue account was in deficit by four hundred thousand dollars. The only reason it was not in deficit as they closed the books is because they cut a contract, um, a settlement with the transportation fund. They use that money for going forward, but they also, because of COVID. They had a, a, a surplus and they put that money to special revenue. That was a one-time event. So the thing I just want people to recall is when you allow accounts to run into deficit. You're, you're, you know, our budget number is very flexible. You know, I, I, I hope as we go forward, part of what we get out of this is that we are putting controls in place to not enable these budgets to run into deficit. Because when we say a hundred eight million dollars, it should mean a hundred eight million dollars, not plus a hundred eight million, plus whatever you choose to run into deficit. Thank you.
I see Mr. Shively and Mr. Miller have their hands up. Mr. Shively?
Thank you, Kevin Shively in Town Council. So if I'm understanding this correctly, what you're saying is that these, that the transfers are not being made. So these, these accounts remain in deficit, right, going on, ongoing? Is that what you're telling us?
From the reports I looked at, right. So the total at the bottom comes out okay. But the lines and, and departments and those type of things are not.
Right, so, so even if you were getting regular reports from Munis or however they are in Excel or whatever. Even if you're getting them on a regular basis at each regular meeting, say, of each of the finance committee and the full Board of Ed. That would make it rather difficult, wouldn't it, to really, to, to see a, an accurate representation of, of where we are in terms of. You know, ongoing?
Well, I, I, I guess there's two ways to look at that. If they look at it and see, if you look at that page fifteen, at the end of the year, benefits were overspent. By a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So if you're not moving the budget, then that's gonna show up sooner.
So, and, okay, I mean, I, I understand that.
But, but it is, you know, the, the statutes and best practices all say you manage the budget. If you have information, you change. So if you know benefits are gonna go over, then again, you may not know.
Make a transfer and you get it approved and you, and you notate it accordingly, right?
Right.
Right, okay. So, and then more specifically on the, the issue, you've made a bunch of recommendations going forward as, as far as. The, uh, activities of both the payroll and human resources departments, right? Um, and, and you also even called the missing, uh, or the unfilled position, I think you used the word vital. That in, in terms of being able to properly segregate these, these activities, is that, is that what you're telling us?
Yes, literally one person manages the whole payroll process and has access to rates and those.
Change those rates as, as well, right? Which you said was not a good idea.
Yeah, she, she does a lot of the inputting. HR may provide data, but payroll is put in putting, and then there's not a. Verification process, but again, the ability, even just the ability to be able to change them is, is, is a lack of segregation of duty. So HR is supposed to manage rates and payroll is just supposed to process.
And then at one point in your recommendations, then you actually even used the, you, you said, we recommend that requests for new positions should only be approved. If a funding source is identified. Why'd you put that in there?
Well, that, that just goes to that position management. So if you're gonna hire somebody, how are you gonna pay for it? That should be the first, that should go along with that. Approval.
Well, just, just putting this statement in here, it seems to suggest that, that. People were being hired without that, an, an, an analysis going on. Is that accurate?
Well, you know, if we just look at. Again, I'll just use the Paris as an example. I mean, there, there wasn't a funding source for that, and, and maybe it was assumed that something else was gonna cover. But conceptually, uh, that type of thing, and certainly there are requirements and needs, but then. That's where the whole budget pro, transfer process comes in. If the needs identify, then move the money to that line. And then you gotta manage something else. So, yeah, without having that, that scheduled complete and knowing, okay, here's where we're at. Here's the salaries, here's all the people we budgeted, here's who we added, here's who's been terminated, here's. I, I don't know how you would be able to make a decision, can we afford to hire this person, without, without having that process in place.
So is it your suggestion then that more properly segregating, uh, these responsibilities would. Would give us better clarity and better, uh, ability of control in that, in that regard?
Well, no, I think just that the payroll processing is an independent issue of, uh, position management. So it's just an internal control that something could go wrong. If that person has the ability. To change rates and nobody would necessarily know, uh, so looking for that restriction or. The compensating control by running a payroll change report and HR reviewing it, you know, so. HR, I think, just needs to be more integrated into that side of the process, and, and, and again, payroll should just be processing. Uh, or else that compensating control is, is, is critical.
And is, in your opinion, is that why the reports that were provided by the hu- human resources department, I think you, you called them not complete? In terms of with salary amounts, is that, is that one of the reasons for that? Is that?
I'm, I'm not sure why, because HR really should know what the salary amounts are, so I guess I, I'm not sure why the sheet. Wasn't completed, because they would have that data during to, just to provide the payroll to, for that process.
Again, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand and that all of us understand, you know, these areas where we really need to focus in terms of, of correcting these. These things going forward. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Miller, do you wanna ask a question and then move on to some more of the prepared questions?
That would be fine. In fact, Mike Miller, Town Council. Mr. Sanifani, I, my question is really piggyback on what Councilman Shively just said. Then you identify so many recommendations within the report. I'm most curious how we identify. Going forward as the biggest priorities. What are the biggest exposures that the Board of Education has? And what are the things they need to immediately identify and fix within your executive summary to have? A B C with no less. Specifics within each of those, but in your estimation, and so it can be on the record for anyone who's listened to this meeting too and hasn't read the report. Where are the biggest exposures that should be identified and corrected right away?
Yeah, that, that would be the, the internal control issues and payroll being the biggest one. So in that section or review, the kind of the procedures. Those recommendations. Putting the internal controls in are, are really the. From my perspective, would be that the highest priority. A lot, a lot of. The other recommendations, you are, are operational and they may be important, but from an internal. Internal control is a higher risk area than, than the operational areas as far as exposure.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm gonna redirect us back to some questions that we had. Some of these tied directly into the payroll department. One of the things was that you had identified benefits that were budgeted to be paid by the employee, but not visible when, um, when you were doing the report. Were you able to determine if those employees actually paid their portions?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's related to cafeteria. Is, I, I think I, I made an observation that in one year, the. There was no employee contributions towards medical. An observation that in one year, the there was no employee contributions towards medical. So I I wasn't, I did ask the question, but I didn't get. That information back. I I did, I think it was two thousand sixteen, so. I don't know if if the employees contributed and it went against the general fund budget or if they weren't required to contribute, but it was just. Because it was the only year there was no employee contributions, it just kind of jumped out, so I.
Okay.
Just noted in case there was an issue.
All right, um. Uh, this question also ties into new hires and terminations. Actual salary information was not provided. You estimated the amount based on the average new hire salary. How did this affect your examination?
Again, it really didn't have an impact. Again, it was just confirming that they didn't have good policies and procedures related to position. Management and and managing the budget to salary line, so. I just did the average was just. To give some perspective. But I but I think you the issue is more that the procedures need to be changed, so that type of thing is complete. And uh, again, so they can know if you can hire somebody, what kind of room you have in the budget. So when you're making those hiring decisions, you have a source. Of of funding for that position.
Okay, thank you. Um. Moving to the section additional procedures. Uh, there was an examination of monies in dispute between Trumbull and the city of Bridgeport for our district uh, out of district students. You identified eight hundred ninety four thousand. Uh, and one dollar owed to Trumbull for the fiscal years two thousand eighteen and twenty. Um, was the amount in dispute owed to Bridgeport by Trumbull determined and validated as well? And did those wash out in the end because there was a recent settlement?
Yep, my understanding, because because I I just asked a few questions and when I. Bridgeport was making a claim for nine hundred thousand for special ed. And then when I I asked a few questions, it was that I was told that well, Bridgeport hadn't paid for your agri science program either, so. What what I saw, again, an email without being involved in 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 the final. Final decision was that that the attorney was suggesting that they just call it even. So you would need to confirm with. Board of Ed. That that was officially done. I wasn't.
Okay.
You know, included in in the final. Part of that.
Okay, the annual town audit identified that the town and the Board of Education needed to add a whistleblower policy. Um, do you know if they have a whistleblower policy and includes the number to call?
Yeah, I I I didn't, I I didn't. Get a chance to look. I don't know that they they have one. That's just that. Again, a best practice recommendation from a fraud prevention standpoint. I I don't know if they have the policy. They're setting up hotlines and and numbers is 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 difficult. Uh, you know, there's outside services that are expensive or. It's debated whether how well they're used because if you call on somebody in the district. So I I I've done a lot with those over the years, so that it it is a best practice if you can implement it, but it's it's a. Uh, I. It is difficult to filter through a lot of the calls you're gonna get that that are valid.
Okay, um. Question about oversight in in correcting this. First of all, do you have a recommended timeline for correction?
You know, outside the internal control, which I you know, that one I would always recommend is is as soon as possible. I I I think. Uh, I think the Board of Ed has to be part of that. Process to figure out timeline from an operational. I mean, I can tell you just. As I did a lot of this work, uh, the system business manager was proactive with a lot of things, and I and I do know a lot of. These recommendations or some of them, I can't know how many have already been implemented by the Board of Ed, so. But uh, the internal control ones, I think that that that's those should be. Done right away and and then I think I. Would 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 schedule them out and 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 ask the Board of Ed what what makes sense, but I I think you will find that quite a few of them have been implemented. You know, partially just because you have different people in there, so a different person did the twenty one budget than did. The budgets I looked at, I didn't look at the twenty one budget and I need to have a different person doing the twenty two budget. So I think they have different process, different methodology. And 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 you might see some of that stuff was corrected just because you have different people in place. But I could. But the priority, I I the timeline is 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 is. Is tough without getting the Board of Ed, you know, what their management involved in that process or and the actual Board of.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Whitmore, I believe that uh, in one way, shape or another, he has answered all of the questions that I had on my list. Um, if there are any other questions that anyone else has. Okay, Mr. Whitmore.
All right, if no one has any further questions that I uh, I'm looking for a motion to.
Wait, hold on. Uh, Marty Isaac.
I'm sorry, one one last quick one. I I and maybe maybe you touched on this. I just wanna make sure I understand it. With regard to uh, compliance, what I thought I heard you say is that. Um, at the end of the day, the Board of Ed is responsible for ensuring compliance. Is that correct? And the other question I have, if that is correct. Um, do you have specific, given that, as I read the audit, it seems that that was not occurring, do you have a set of best practices? That the Board of Ed should be evaluating to ensure our compliance procedures improve?
I I think, I mean, we're we're talking about compliance as far as the the first part, so we're talking about. The budget transfers. That type of thing, the board has a policy. I think it's just a matter of follow following. That policy and then following the state statutes. You know, again, the big, the categories are on page fifteen here. The statutes. You know, say that transfers between those have to go to the Board of Ed, so I think, and again, it has to be the Board of Ed.
Well, so let me interrupt for just a moment. If if it is the Board of Ed and that has been their responsibility for the past. Number of years and it wasn't occurring, um, what is different tomorrow than today in terms of structure to ensure that it happens?
Uh, I. I I I guess just. I would I would say awareness. I I would hope because. This is, reports been issued, this is being being talked about. I mean, we'll say management should be preparing the transfers to bring to. The Board of Ed, but then the Board of Ed should also be reviewing and make sure, again, these deficits aren't showing up and they hadn't received the transfer, so. Uh, I I I think that there's responsibility on 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 both sides, so I. Uh, and in those reports that are, if they're going to the board and the details are there, then. The compliance should be easy to evaluate. And and again, a lot of the things don't go over till the end, uh, so it's it's hard. To tell along the way and to to you run out of money, so. You know, that's that's a hard question to answer other than. Uh, you you have new management in place who now has this and. You know, hopefully this is a tool that they use to 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 kind of. Look at what processes they have in place and 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 adjust them to to make sure that the monitoring is in place. Thank you.
Yeah, Marty, I I I think we can all agree that um, whatever you wanna call this, an audit or perform operational review or performance review. I think it's a very, very long overdue. Um, it has created a dialogue in the Board of Ed. It's created a dialogue here in town government, and it's certainly creating a dialogue out in the community. So I think that the next step is for us to meet with the Board of Ed. And our school officials and just uh, come up together with a plan of action uh, moving forward. And how it's going to impact current budget and um. And just keep that line of communication open so that uh, everything that, you know, the recommendations. Uh, listening in last night to the Board of Ed, uh, both Dr. Samuel. And uh, Mr. Hendrickson alluded to already putting a lot of these recommendations into place. So we would look forward to um, hearing about that. And uh, and just how the Board of Ed can be more hands on. Um, with the day daily operation, weekly operation, monthly operation. So uh, I wanna thank Mr. Centafanti for his time this evening, for his answers. Uh, Kevin, did you have something?
Yeah, I did just wanna, I I did have one quick follow up to what Mr. Isaac was saying, Kevin Shively from the Town Council again. So. From your experience, um, well, first of all, do you have any recommendations, any professional recommendations uh, for the Town Council, being the body that that instituted this process? Uh, and put this process in place. For how best to monitor any changes or or um. Uh, actions on these recommendations, and if you don't have recommendations, do you have any experience? With other clients that you've worked with in terms of of governmental bodies? And what they've done in order to. Kind of follow and see whether, you know, which of these recommendations have been followed through on.
Yeah, I I guess the dynamic's a little bit different with the Board of Ed, but normally. What what the process would be is to schedule out the recommendations and and. And what what the plan of action is and then what the timeline is and 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 kind of update that along the way, so at least. So that that happens a lot on the town side, we'll say with just the regular recommendations to management, that the board will say, okay, we're gonna talk about these until they're fixed. So at every meeting, we want the status report and then. Or again, in some cases I've had where it's okay, we're not gonna do this. And 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 again, management and 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 you get to decide if that's, you know, cost benefit, what what makes the most sense. But at least that evaluation of this is what we can do and this is. We agree or this is, we're gonna do this instead and and then what the estimated timeline is and and then when it's completed to be. Not completed, so scheduling it out that way. Is is what I've seen as far as a way to manage it. And then prioritizing it, I didn't, you know, that that can can be done again, again, I focus more on the internal control. Um, but but I think getting back from the Board of Ed of what they've already corrected. Would be the the first part of it, because some of these practices. Were were just, were done by prior management, so I I I think current management has. At least I I've talked to the the new business manager, but I haven't talked to the new super and seems seems to have a plan. Uh, and his his normal practice of. What he's done in other districts is different than what was done. You know, in in the period that I reviewed. So I think getting that that baseline would be the best place to start.
Thank you.
All right. Again, thank you very much for your time tonight, Mr. Centafanti. We appreciate that. Uh, motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Joan Glasser-Wernstein.
Thank you, a second.
Second Carl Masara.
Carl. All right, thank you, everyone, for your time. And uh, we'll let you know our next step. Have a great evening.